Good morning. On behalf of the people of this county, I welcome you and I call this meeting to order. We will have our roll call. Raise your right hand. I assume that's in proper order.
Mr. Chairman, Melvin McLawhorn, present. Thank you for...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got Commissioner McLawhorn via conference call this morning.
Right. Okay. Good morning, Melvin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioner, President.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We will now stand and have our invocation and pledge, please.
Almighty and merciful Father, we humbly beseech Thee to watch over us as we do the people's business this morning. Please guide us with Your invisible hands so we may find Your favor in the decisions we reach. Please bless us with Your grace through Jesus Christ, our only mediator and advocate. Amen.
Place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like you to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor in the capitol, raise your right hand. Okay. Mr. Manager, you have a list for us?
Yes, sir. On public addresses of the board, we have two people signed up and if our attorney will, um, the county attorney will read our statement of public addresses and will ask the first person, Robert Murray, to come forward and give us your name and address.
Yes. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. We ask when you come to the podium that you state your name and address. I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker and we ask that all comments remain positive and respectful.
I understand maybe Mr. Murray is not going to speak at this time. Next we have Stephen Hardy Baraz. Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, staff. Stephen Hardy Baraz from Farmville, North Carolina. I'd like to address you on the issues of sidewalks here in our county. A few years ago, I sat through here after going through the Pitt County Citizens Academy, which was a great experience learning about the complexities of our county's system. And I remember clearly, we were able to apply for a CDC grant to the Department of Health to work on the built environment, to address the ongoing issues of obesity, accessibility, diabetes, and cancer by changing our environment to make it more accessible, more friendly for people to bike and walk, and increase health here, and also to reduce the dangerousness and reduce the crime in our area. Does the continuing lack of sidewalks, bike lanes, bike racks, et cetera, make our society, our environment, more conducive to unhealthy living? And this is a problem for us. Now, I understand the county does not build roads. It does not maintain roads. It does not do that. This is an NC DOT responsibility or city MPO responsibility. I get that. However, current projects for the NC DOT, in particular, the Allen Road widening project, the Fire Tower and Portertown Road widening projects, have areas which they will include, excuse me, in the planning process, the environmental studies, the right-of-way, and the building of sidewalks if the county or the city match the requirement. This would be a 40% match for DOT to pay the 60% plus all the construction costs in the agreement here. My understanding from the city of Greenville is they will agree to do their part when the parcels of land enter the county area. The county has not stepped up to do, to pay their fair share. Now, this concerns me as a taxpayer because if we don't do it while this project is going on, not only will there be further improvements and interruptions in service, but then they won't connect. We won't have people able to use these accessibly. We won't have disabled vets be able to get around, women, men pushing strollers or wheelchairs, getting through and out, children and whatnot. So, additional costs would be occurred if we had to redo environmental studies, legal right-of-way, et cetera. So, this bothers me. The lack of a complete street policy when we incorporate areas and they don't have sidewalks on both sides, the lack of support for this. So, I'd like to encourage you to think about this, and I know that there isn't the funding currently. But I know that this state, the League of Municipalities, has lobbied for many years and has over $15 million for municipalities, not counties, to use Powell bill funds. This is gasoline tax money that goes toward the building of greenways, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. Counties currently, it's my understanding, are not permitted to tap this. However, gasoline is sold in the county. So, could we please consider lobbying to make sure that we do get that funding or that, at least in this case, perhaps match Greenville's commitment to a healthier built environment? This is a resolution you all passed a few years ago to encourage this in the future. I think right now, we're failing to do so when we don't have policies, we don't make these matches in these ongoing projects. So, I hope we can be creative and find ways to fund this. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's the last speaker we had. And I know we don't normally respond to public addresses of the board. If I can just make a brief comment on that. The, we as the county government have had active conversations with the city about the Allen Road, Fire Tower Road, um, road widening projects and the sidewalks as they're related to those projects. And we've reiterated the county's stance that the county is not in the road building business and that, um, but I'm happy to report, as I've read the newspaper in the last couple of weeks, the Greenville City Council has opted to go ahead and fund the portion of sidewalks outside the city, but yet in the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, because they see it as their public good, as they will be annexing these areas at some point in the future. So, the connectivity between the sidewalks in the city's jurisdiction and outside of it within the ETJ will occur as I, as I read the reports on the newspaper. So, that is a good news item.
Thank you. Ready for the next item?
Yes, sir. Okay. The next item we have is a report from our finance director, Brian Barnett, regarding our next GFOA certificate award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's my pleasure to notify you that the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded Pitt County its 28th consecutive achievement in financial reporting for the fiscal year that ended in June 30th of 2017. This puts us in the top one-fifth of the state in terms of counties with at least 28 years of receiving the award.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We need to move to accept the award and recognize the contribution of the financial services.
I second that.
All right. All in favor, in the capitol, raise your right hand. So ordered.
Okay, next.
The second phase of that sentence that Jimmy was alluding to, you need to respond to that, any Scott?
Just to congratulate the staff for a job well done, continued, and of our financial services staff.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Next is the manager's report. We have the next meeting days to report out. Tomorrow, June the 5th. Just to remind you, your public hearing on the fiscal year 18, 19, 2018, 2019 annual operating budget will occur here at 7 o'clock tomorrow night on Tuesday, June the 5th. Then your next meeting will be June the 18th, which is the third Monday in June at 6:00 PM. Next item, item B, the Health Department Medicaid Cost Settlement Report. Just to make you aware, the Health Director, Dr. Morrow, will be coming before the board at your next meeting on June the 18th to discuss a payback of some funds that the county had received, I believe in 2014 or 2015, surplus funds on this Medicaid cost settlement that we're going to have to pay some of them back. And I think we have a strategy, this is going to be about a $400,000 payback, but I think we have a strategy on another project, we're going to be recouping that much or more. So, it's going to be a wash in the dollars. So, it should not have a negative impact on fund balance. Next item, item C, request for public hearing. Commissioner Farley has written us and staff and has required, requested that we put the drone ordinance on for a public hearing for June the 18th at 6:00 PM. This is just to notify you that we will be advertising for that, for that night meeting unless directed otherwise.
All right. That accomplishes what Charles wanted on that, Charles.
Yes, yes. Okay. We have, we have the motion and we have a second. Mr. Chairman, may we have a vote?
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Do we have a motion for a consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. Item for decision. Right with Brian, I believe. Yeah, you already have that. Good. You're on the ball.
Yes, sir. At the end of the, each fiscal year, we do look at our fire districts, the money that we collect for them in terms of taxes and anything that we collect outside of what we had originally budgeted for, we do pass on to the fire districts. So, in this case, we're looking at about $170,000 and you have the budget amendment to pass that money on to the fire districts.
I'm so moved to have that done.
I second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered. Okay, next.
Next, you have an appointment to the Grimes, Grimeson Planning Board. The Mayor Eleanor Farr is recommending the appointment of Toby Williams.
It's pleasure to board.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
All in favor in the capitol, raise your right hand. So ordered. Okay, next.
Next, also, the Mayor Farr is from the Grimeson, Town of Grimeson, is recommending for their Board of Adjustment, the appointment of Rebecca Meeks to their Board of Adjustment.
Love the approval.
All in favor, in the capitol, raise your right hand. So ordered. Reappointment to Winnebago Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Winnebago Board of Adjustment. You've got the, um, there's a recommendation for the reappointment of Jeffrey Bryle to the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor in the capitol, raise your right hand. So ordered. All right. We've had a request for a closed session. Madam Attorney, will you direct us in that respect?
Yes, sir. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, under attorney-client privilege, A6, under personnel, A4, under economic development, and A1 for confidential information to review your closed session minutes.
Pleasure to board.
Motion to go into closed session.
I second.
All in favor in the capitol, raise your right hand. All right. If y'all'll excuse us, we'll be back out. My monta.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we increase the rate of Mrs. Cherry and the Health Department from seven to six five to seven to six twelve, and that'd be effective June the thirtieth.
Do have a second?
Second in.
June third.
June third.
June third, paper.
What did I say?
You said thirtieth.
It's June.
June thirty.
June the third. Okay, very good. I just missed it by a zero.
Who's got a motion?
All right, I'll second that one.
Second?
Yes, I will.
All in further discussion? If not all in favor, then you can raise your right hand. So ordered. Any further business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve our closed session minutes from our May seventh, two thousand eighteen meeting as to the content only.
I'll second that.
All right, in discussion? If not all in favor, then you can raise your right hand. So ordered. Now, any further business at this time before we get to Commissioner's comments?
We're supposed to do the authorize the county to proceed. Are we?
With what?
All of your closed session matters have been handled.
Yeah, we've handled all of them.
Tom made a comment. Mary, you've had your comment. Beth made a comment.
No comment.
Glenn.
I'll get him.
Charles.
I'm ready to stand up, Mr. Chairman.
Jiminy. Anne. All right, do we have a motion to June?
Move for adjournment.
Stand. That's it.